I'll call the meeting because Joseph just reminded me, and I knew this going in, that that clock is not right.
All right.
And since everybody's here who's coming, I think we may as well start. I will call the meeting to order. I need a motion to approve the agenda. A reason not to.
I move to approve it.
Second for, okay, all in favor? Okay. There's no public there. So the first item is to revisit the naming and recognition policy that we tackled last month and left with some questions. Sounds like the question was whether we could go into closed session and apparently not. So are there other, that's what I remember being the main thing.
When I talked to legal about it, they sort of reiterated. There is the committee, the named committee could be a non-public. So there could be conversation available, there would be board members there, but it would not be grounds for having a closed meeting.
Okay. So are we ready to approve or not approve this policy? Or is there more discussion? No? Okay, in that case, I need a motion to approve the policy as amended by the committee.
So moved, seconded.
All in favor? Next on the agenda is NOBO budget request. And I would, just before we start, Joseph and John, do you have questions about what NOBO is before we discuss it? No, okay.
The tricky is part of putting it together, one aspect is we don't know what the state money is for the code. We don't have confirmation of that yet, that budget come up later in the year. So we based up estimate off of the previous year. They are coming down. I did not kind of work out the equation of how much lower it's probably going to go. But because the NOBO budget essentially can roll over. If it was, if the money came a little bit lower than we expected, there would be built in accommodation for that, or we could underspend the project to make room for it. So that's sort of the most unknown piece, the Friends Foundation annual gift. We, we know what that will be, but we just use sort of previous years' NOBO for the state money.
Looking down the road for next year, are we thinking that the changes to the state library are gonna impact this, like in Rich Iowa in particular? I wasn't sure if, I thought maybe the access Iowa was an ify on which ones which, but one of them was going to be very likely affected and the other one was possibly going to be affected at what it, I mean, do you see anything happening like that?
I think all parts of it could be affected, including ILL. Because there's, there get to be different restrictions on what kind of collection, kind of what material. I would say I'm relatively confident for this budget cycle that all of the agreements will be fulfilled. But going forward, I don't know. I think it looks, there's a real risk that that will be reduced.
Especially since you don't see this until after we, you know, till you don't see the money until after you have somewhat allotted it. It's kind of extra tricky, kind of after future forecast. Use your magic eight ball to kind of figure out what the state might help you with.
If there was articulated planned reductions in that, we could sort of build that into the language of the NOBO request. And even if we didn't have the numbers yet, we could sort of say these are, these are the priority projects. These are the projects that would be, the state funding would be spent on. We think about the state money contribution just a little bit differently because most of that does need to be spent in the year that's given. Where, you know, the annual gift from the Friends Foundation doesn't have that stipulation. So we, they are sort of approached timeline wise a little bit differently, but I think it feels really unknown to me what the future events.
Right.
And as a larger library in the state, we have more, more revenue, more money coming from that than a lot of other libraries.
I'm assuming you also have a lot of, you do more ILL than other places and you are more of a participator on your end.
Yes.
I know these sorts of things are sort of demand vagueness, but the evaluation assessment tools on the second page, that was so vague, I had no idea. It's not a lot, it's $2,000, but I don't, I have no idea what that money is going to be used for.
Well, in all fairness, John, I also wrote something specific next to that, and that's like the only thing I wrote on the packet.
It's a great question, and you're right, there isn't so much on blood bagels. That, I'm imagining that we would first look into some technology tools that will give us deeper information about like click through rates of social media newsletters, things like that. We're really trying to hone in on what are the most effective ways to, to share the library story? And it's not just, did you open the newsletter, but did you spend more than one second? Did you go through a link? And unfortunately, a lot of that's not built into the tools that we already use or have additional costs. And then to apply some of the same thinking to social media. That, that's also a possibility. There's a distinct possibility that $2,000 will not cover. And we also could do some general staff training around evaluation of other services. But I would imagine the tech tools, I can make that a little more.
And just for, if you, if there is staff training, what's the cost? Why do you need more money for?
We probably bring in an outside facilitator, the training. That wouldn't be, that's a, something that we would have ready access to a city trainer for. Okay.
I have two questions. Supporting staff, like the children's services, I know makes me uncomfortable. And we've been doing it for a while because we wanted to advocate for the bookmobile. But I think it's time that we start tipping this and putting this back into the regular budget. These are services that we've already been able to substantiate the value for. Even if that meant working with the city on a 5% decrease each year. I think we have this one position that's just floating out there and it makes me uncomfortable. I think it should, staff needs to be paid by the city. It's a little bit different with the development office because the function of that office is tied to some of these fires. But direct service provision for children's services, I strongly believe should not be coming out of the budget any longer. This was to help us get the bookmobile up and running. We've already proven value. Miss that question, I don't know.
I agree with that, and there was no timeline sort of created in the beginning when this was rolled out as a solution. But we sort of had the same thought about starting to ask for sort of a percentage step back every year in the budget cycle. The city has been clear that now is not the time to be asking for new provisions, but I think if we present it as this is our step system, and you know, we're only, we're only going to say X percentage this, this budget cycle, X percentage next. But it seems like it's going to be more, more likely to be approved.
Substantiate value already that the bookmobiles are functioning and serving communities that we weren't able to before.
I agree, it makes me uncomfortable sort of philosophically, but it also just consumes a significant percentage of this budget.
It does, and those are funds that could be going to other things.
Yes, and that would make a huge difference in programming or, or other direct.
And I think the funders don't know that we're paying, using their funds for stepping in this way, which transparency, I think we can do better. So I don't know if we want to do this year, but I'd like to see us start working on some, I know, if you want to say some.
Oh, no, I was gonna say, I think she was a fly on the wall, like everything you said, Elthar and I had talked about putting this together, like.
I know, I, when we started this, I remember why we did it, because we needed to get the bookmobile going, but it's five years, six years, it's time for us to, to call it.
And every year that costs your life because of the general cost.
And it's, if we don't say something, it's assumed that we can carry this, but those funds need to be going to what they're intended for. The second thing I wanted to bring up is the cost on a board recognition event. Again, those funds could be going somewhere else and whether we have lower cost ways and spending $1,500 on ourselves to do that. I mean, he still have other ideas about this, but to me, raising funds for ourselves.
Tom, do you want to weigh in?
It's uncomfortable.
Yeah, I understand that, I think it's a very hard thing to think about, and I think maybe we could do a recognition event that costs less money. I think, you know, do reception instead of dinner. A big part of the discussion that Carolyn Ellsworth and I have had is that the other option for funding this is to ask people to pay for it out of their pockets. And we expect staff to end, and that seems sort of uncomfortable also to ask them to fund it. And also for some board members, it's likely to be a challenge. So I think it's a real conundrum. It's, it's pretty consistent with practices in some other, and I realize this isn't the same, but some other nonprofits that I've served on boards, that some of the gift funds are used for celebration events. I don't know, I, I think it's important to have an event to thank the volunteer trustee who, you know, spent a lot of time and energy on this. And to frankly, to have a fellowship event for the board and staff. What the exact nature of the event is, and can we get the cost down? I think there are definitely possibilities there. So that's, that's sort of how, how I thought about it.
And, and I'm not arguing with the idea of like, I think that's, we historically did that. And we did have people pay for their own meals when they attended. I understand your generosity and it could be a hardship for some people. But I again, look at the source and think these are funds meant for services, and I'm just not sure that's for me my priority for use of those funds, yeah.
Just a little bit more context, after conversation with Tom, I did check in with legal about whether it was considered a conflict of interest or is there any, any other issue? And they said that, no, technically there would be no problem with it. They did recognize there were, was an optics issue of, you know, potential, potentially some questions about it. Jen and I sort of had a conversation last week, thinking about another way to frame it would be to put these resources towards the general volunteer reception. That would make it less of sort of that fellowship aspect because it would be a much larger event and it wouldn't feel sort of as, as much of a board and staff event or for a community event. But that is something that we already allocate resources from the, the general budget. I think it wouldn't be out of line to, to include part of that funding through NOBO. But again, it would kind of broaden that audience. I, I don't know how people would feel about that if it would make it feel awkward to combine with general volunteer reception with board recognition. But it was another idea that came up.
And again, I'm only speaking for myself, so others may have quite diverse opinions on this.
I think that's fair though, like what I'm thinking, what I'm had in mind, right when I looked at that $1,500 line item, it's all the blood, sweat and tears that went into the, the book sale and how much we got out of that. And gosh, we're really, we're, we're doing that to Pat or someone, like, yeah, sure, there, there's a place for that, but something about that appear.
I, I understand those arguments. I do think it is a bit of a conundrum. That we haven't had this event for quite a while and our circumstances have changed because it used to be, well, the first one I went to, the board president hosted it at his home, which was great. But not everybody, you know, can or wants to do that. And then we had Susan, whose son had a restaurant and so we could use the room. I know when I talked to Jen at some point, you know, they're calling around and asking for a space. And the spaces themselves are $1,000, $1,500, and that's even without any food at all. So that's, that's part of it is finding a venue. The other part of it is, you know, I think there have been discussions, especially apparently traditionally, the, everybody who went would pay their own way except leave new board members and retiring board members. And then everybody else would pick up the, their share of the cost for those people. Well, there's quite a few of those people now because if we include the people who left two years ago. And I'm not really comfortable asking staff to do that. I think it's not, it's not. I mean, there may be staff that doesn't care, but there may be staff that, you know, have young families and stuff and it, and it matters. So it's sort of a, like everybody acknowledges that an event is a good thing, but we don't quite know how to pull it off.
Well, if we double, if we piggyback on another event that's already in our own facility or did it in a park or someplace that didn't have that overhead, would that still meet the same goals and not have a $1,000?
You still have the food, of course.
Well, right. Yeah. This is true, and maybe there's ways to adjust that too, I'm just thinking. Just to jump off what DJ said, the labor that goes into a book sale to treat us all to reception just, I don't know, I have some problems. I don't have a kind of an analogy to people who found the board, it's just know where those funds come from.
It doesn't seem appropriate to take you back to what the volunteers and the big customer, we are volunteers as well. It's a different role and a different type of volunteering, but it's the same umbrella.
You do miss, you do miss the the chance to socialize with, with some of the staff. The volunteer event, I mean, I've been to a couple of them and they're lovely, but they're not really social events.
And that is the piece, I really do see the value in that socialization and that sort of, you know, relationship building, you know, that perhaps an event like this wouldn't happen, so.
And I completely understand the argument that you guys put, you know, and I don't necessarily disagree with it. It's, it's just like, okay, well, I guess we'll let Tom deal with it.
Thank you, Carol. I mean, it, what I'm hearing is that, that, that nobody, or some, some people feel pretty uncomfortable with either funding mechanism at this level, at, at this kind of expense. So I'm hearing two other options, one would be a low expense board only event, boardens. And the other is rolling into the volunteer appreciation event. Which I appreciate that that doesn't provide the ability to socialize with our, you know, to the fellowship opportunity.
And Tom, let me just, there's only two of us that are kind of struggling with it, so we're a minority.
Well, I'm not sure that that's necessarily true.
Yeah, some people haven't spoke. You know, I'm kind of inclined to actually put off a decision if, if people don't mind and that input and work with the staff and bring back another proposal. What do people, how do people feel about that?
Well, what do we do with the NOBO budget needing action tonight?
You could, I mean, it could be we could hold that, or you could probably approve it till next month. It doesn't, it wouldn't hurt anything to revisit it in a month and approve it at that point.
So you don't need a decision on this tonight on the, on the budget?
I don't think there's anything that we don't. Yeah, it's been done in other months.
Are there ways to, you know, can my, it says board recognition, but I mean, are there things that are staff recognition events? Like, I think I would feel more comfortable spending money on the staff than I do spending money on us. I'm happy to celebrate this library staff anytime. So, um, I don't know, maybe it just needs to be slightly repackaged. Um, I don't know.
I will say that another event that could be rolled into would be, we do an in-service day once a year for staff. I don't think it would be inappropriate to include this, you know, immediately before or after lunch or in the evening, sort of as an, as an optional thing, or in that, we're talking about the whole library staff at this point.
I think you're onto something.
But I, I think that I'm using NOBO funds for either part of staff in-service day or the volunteer recognition event feels comfortable to me. I mean, you get to make the decision, but I think either of those would be not out of line with other users' NOBO requests. And that, if that felt more comfortable as far as taking it out of an individual board event to sort of, I'll tell you that $1,500 towards either one of those budgets would be kind of a game changer.
Well, we, it sounds like what people really enjoy about it is their chance to socialize with the staff. And so if those two things could be like a board and staff event, instead of just, it sounds like board recognition event, sounds like we're just all going to a fancy, having a fancy night out on the library and if it were kind of re labeled even as something where it's like a board and staff, maybe that's just something on paper that, but I haven't attended either, any of these events, so I guess I don't have like a perfect frame of reference, but I'm happy to give the staff money to take a break and enjoy each other's company and get to know them better.
Well, I have attended them and I will say that sitting down at a table with whoever you happen to be sitting with, you learn things about their family or their, you know, eat. It's, it's a positive, well, for me, it's been a positive experience. I won't pretend to speak for the staff. That particular fellowship opportunity is good. I don't know that it would be the same. I mean, if you're talking about the entire staff, it's going to have to be a different event and you can't have, you know, I don't know how many people work here, but it would be different then, right? So it sounds like maybe we just need to.
I think we table and come up with a few options by the time we have our next get together with the focus being on it being a lower cost in some way, shape or form. I think that would be.
Yeah. So a couple of people maybe who would be interested working on, on that could, could have one meeting with, with me.
May as well.
I think I saw.
Yeah, that's me.
DJ.
DJ, okay.
If I'm gonna make.
Someone else?
Robbins.
Here's one more question. Can you, what did, you know, since all of these funds are raised by the friends, what do the friends do to recognize that all people have raised these funds and maybe?
What do we do to recognize that board members?
Right, because they're raised by those volunteers, so I'm just wondering what's their expectation?
Well, traditionally, there's a, like a certificate and a thank you card. That's what, that's what I've been able to see from the past, and so I actually did send out those cards today to both the card, the department board member. And I think the stewardship of our board is something that we need to deepen.
We have looked almost in the past, but we are talking about doing sort of a leadership theme. We're saying retreat, what we really mean is to go to another city building and have an all-day meeting. But I do think that, again, if that's another place this funding could be applied and extend that, you know, to a volunteer breakfast that includes maybe a solitary, and that would be, I mean, it's a, I think we've been approaching it as a sort of a learning fellowship training kind of day, but I don't think it would be hard to, that's our option, we could kind of talk about in a small group of like, is that a way that could satisfy a couple of these concerns?
If, Carol, you do want a staff perspective with somebody who has been.
I'd be happy to.
I've found this very valuable to be able to speak more outside of things that we talk about.
Cause you don't talk about library business, talk about your kids and your dogs and kind of food you like to eat and stuff. It's a valuable thing. I don't know if it's $1,500 valuable or not, but.
I just think that $1,500 is really not a lot of money.
It isn't a lot of money.
So I'm not sure. We're spending a lot of energy on very little money.
If you're talking about, I, I, well, at one point when I was involved with trying to plan this, we talked maybe 40 people and you're not going to get it down too much, your rest of them probably. If you, if you supply any kind of food.
We have some viable ideas and we can unpack it with a small group.
If we get to the point where we're like, you know what? This is a fool's errand, okay? We can, we'll know that. So we'll bring something back next month. Did I, DJ? Was it, was it just DJ that volunteered?
Yeah.
Okay, DJ and I are in charge. I think, DJ, you're, you're grilling, I'll crack the beers.
All right. Maybe the new people want to be, the problem is you're in transition in June to July.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Limited numbers.
Okay, so let's move on to other pieces of the.
I think we want to derays some.
Right.
Yeah, please. So I guess in all of these categories, we can go to personnel, personnel, Iowa City Book Festival, et cetera. Do you have, did you, are these all priced out somehow? Because I guess the narrative is very vague for me in a lot of these categories. I'm like, what? How do you, how did you derive, you know, $10,000 for this or $20,000 for this? Or how do you, how do you arrive at those numbers?
Yeah, some of them are very, very sort of, we could itemize them pretty easily and some of them are not. So I'll give an example, like the library programming, $20,000, probably $18,000 of that are things that we could just go down the list and say, this is the partnership of this agency. This is the Comic Con, this is the whatever. Others, especially the smaller pots of money, are things that we have a general idea of what the cost will be. But we haven't, for instance, gotten a quote or things like that. The one reason that I think that's been the traditional way to do this budget is it does roll over, so there's not the risk of if we budgeted $26.90 for something and it came in at $24, there's not the, the pressure of reallocation and loss, et cetera. And it will just continue to build in the, in that budget pot.
What is this, what is collection support?
Oh, so that's book purchases, book and material.
One thing that I did want to mention is the BT cap, how loving subscription. We would normally spend money like that out of the operating budget, but I'm using this as save money to compare two different products. So the operating budget is buying our current product next year. And this is to buy this other product and then it's going to allow us to see if it will fully replace it, that we want to move forward with it. And then it will take care of it.
So you can kind of do some feature parity comparison.
It'd be sort of a one year.
Yeah, it's one year, it's a small supplement, it's not the whole price of that, it's just to allow us to play around and it's just make a good decision.
I'm excited to see about that.
Totally different.
Like data nerd stuff.
Thirty years, it's the present.
My very first library job was in Upper Arlington, Ohio, and we were the second public library to use OCLC. So I, oh, wow. I went through cataloguer, which I thought would kill me, but it didn't, I loved it. Anyways, I, I never like to hear about OCLC.
I don't think OCLC is going anywhere. I use it. I don't think OCLC is going anywhere. I use it. I don't think it's going anywhere.
So so where are we? Are we gonna put this off and approve it in July pending the
Yes.
decision about?
And when the proposal's on.
Is there a issue with new board members coming in?
Uh, that's a good point. Would there be an issue with us conditionally approving it here and then doing a planning as a as a agenda item, an amendment around it?
Also.
The recognition, yeah.
And also, if the money rolls over, then we can approve it as is and then hope to get under that budget amount, right, or and then hope to use.
This is something of is when you join a board. This is kind of a complex budget.
It is.
And just say to people at the first meeting, okay, we want you to approve a budget. Can be challenging. Those orienting them.
And I like that what it is to begin with. Right, and I do like the idea, um, Claire, that you have about um, not codifying precisely what the recognition would be. But at but to to keep that the the costs in mind, and I don't think that that would supersede if we approved this as is. And also had Tom and I get together and and maybe Dan uh, to talk about how we can keep that reined in. Everybody wins.
Yeah, to shoot for something. I mean, approve as is so that, you're right, new staff doesn't have to start with. I'm discussing over that, or new
Yeah, exactly.
New people wouldn't have to walk in on that. And then also just with the idea in mind that that fifteen hundred dollars isn't set in stone. I mean, it's also one of the smallest allotments of like Joseph said, I think, one of the smallest dollar amounts on there.
And none of the alternatives we've been talking about are gonna be free. I mean, it's a whole staff.
Right.
So
Nailed it.
So to to approve the funds, I I don't think it locks us into, you know, steak and wine for just the board members, you know.
We can really have some discussion about next year's no food budget and what that really looks like.
May we intervene that we could pass it and just from your perspective?
Absolutely. I mean, in my opinion, this is a more flexible budget than the operative budget in that it is board-controlled. So at any point, you could call for it to come back to the table. We could come with a different proposal to replace something or to, you know, I I think it's a living budget. We do enter it into Munis, which is our budgeting software, and we assign the expenses to budget lines. But it is board-controlled and that can be amended if needed to. So I think that this, to me, at any point, somebody could call us back for more conversation.
Well, I think we've already established that these categories are pretty vague, so it's just one more vague category.
As a side note, we're about the same price as three vacuums.
So I I think, are we ready to to take a vote on the Nobu budget? All right, I need a motion to approve Nobu budget as presented.
I will second.
Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All right. So the review, the draft of the strategic plan. Um, you did say board action required, so is this the point at which we're actually saying this is the plan?
If if it feels that affect greater folks, this would be the time that we would say go ahead and implement it. If it doesn't, again, this is a timeline that can be flexible. It felt like in April when we talked about it, there there were still some feedback. I feel we sort of incorporated that along with staff feedback about the draft. Really, the core pieces didn't didn't get a lot of comments. It was more sort of the packaging and I felt like when I really analyzed all of the feedback, there were sort of two questions about was what does this one really mean and why didn't you write it this way? So we reapproved, we approached again and tried to make it um even more accessible, to remove that jargon a step farther and write it in a way that could be um, could work for as many of our audiences as we could make it have, make it work.
I thought you succeeded.
I do. I felt the same way. It was much more succinct and clear and and you feel like overall staff is comfortable with. There it is now.
I think that there is, um, I think that there's a lot of staff concern about the future of the budget. And and the future of library services in sort of the world-sized environment. But this feels to me like a plan that has room for that work and that will allow us to kind of focus on some of the things that still rebuilding lots from the COVID closure, understanding the community's changing needs. And my longer-term aspiration would be that this plan will be us to a point that we can think about a capital campaign for extending it to what's the next plan. So that's kind of my thinking with it. It does. Uh, it doesn't have a capital campaign, it doesn't have a a super high-reaching sort of pinnacle to it. But it feels like this is the work that needs to happen for the next step and I I also think that we're sort of bringing to the forefront some things that we haven't before with staff wellbeing and some of those pieces that I think might feel different, but give us the intentionality of being able to say yes, we will put resources, whatever the larger pool of resources we're gonna take part of that, I need it for this to come to port. And the experience of having a staff committee work with this plan the whole way through has been amazing. It's done really great work. I think it's helped with all staff buy-in and awareness. So I look forward to um, after this is approved, kind of developing maybe four staff committees that can take a goal and really keep that involvement, because I think the ownership kind of lets it come alive. And as I noted in the memo, I think it can be sort of a tunnel to look at it in this format. It works really well as a work plan. But as soon as you start adding the tactics, I think it's natural for a lot of people to sort of focus there. And the bigger picture is harder to see. That's why we include that draft of sort of a a higher level document that brought those pieces out and didn't include all of the other information, but hoping to kind of give you both views.
And just procedurally, we this, we are mandated to review this, not just now, but every year from now on, isn't that right?
Yes, and we've traditionally done at least every six months updates to the plan. Um, we've tried a few different, like it's quarterly better, it's six months better, so there are regular updates to it.
Most recently, I think we've done quarterly, which I think works kind of well. Okay, more comments or are we ready to approve the plan?
I'm looking for it to prove well.
Need a second, okay. All in favor? Okay. Elsewhere, you are up next.
This is the time of year that feels like super busy and I'm gonna need to sit down to write a report for the month. It's sort of like what are we doing? Some of you like all the big people, the workload comes together for implementation and so I feel like it's sort of a light one, but um, summer reading is going great, staff are engaged, happy, public seems happy. You know, Angie will have all those numbers, but just sort of a recognition that staff are really working hard this time of year and the numbers are are edging right back up to those pre-pandemic numbers, so children programmed with hundreds of folks, so um, that's exciting to see. Victoria, our T librarian, has really ruled out a a pretty comprehensive plan that's really easy for teachers to follow, sort of this kind of activities on Mondays, on Tuesdays, on Wednesdays. So it's fun to see that group developing. Yeah, otherwise, happy to answer any questions. Oh, and there is a change. Robin and I met with um, Rob, some of the board supervisors to kind of talk through some of the the strategic initiatives that are coming up for the library, some of the funding challenges we might be facing, just kind of a an update since they hadn't needed to appoint any trustees uh, for the county seat for uh, two terms. And the conversation I thought was really positive. Um, Rob was there too. So we talked through those things. We kind of got an idea of timeline. Then when I checked in with the county um, to to verify what package we'd be watching, to see the applications come out. They let me know that they had not received any applications and that they were sort of saying, well, we haven't heard from Robin if she'd like to continue. The universe is speaking. I reached out to Robin and started, hey, this is the update. Do you have any feeling about what we should do next? And we had a good conversation about sort of the the whole situation and um, it sounds like there there's willingness to continue. Um, so we we both confirmed that that that's um, we support that application for for another term and the supervisor will vote on that.
Yeah, I don't think it's a done situation.
No, they.
There's just no application.
So.
Kind of unusual situation, so um.
They'll, they will. At their.
Back on their table.
And then my understanding is if if for some reason that that wasn't, that decision wasn't made, I believe the process would be, the commission would be open for additional thirty days. And I I think it's a great plot twist. Um, I mean, I think I think that the we would never, you know, like somebody would stay on after two full terms. But the the knowledge base that that gives is pretty amazing, especially thinking about some of the potential upcoming challenges. So I I feel like the technology would be really positive, um, positive thing for the board and for the library. Um, and our conversation with Rod, I felt like was was very positive. I thought he was very, I mean, it was good exchange, kind of focusing on library values, uh, but the importance of diversity and thought and all of those pieces that we talked about all the time. So we will, we will see and by the by the early part of July, we should know what that looks like.
You know, and a note to part, I'm just getting what coming. I get the sense the board of supervisors, if if they're behind what Rod was saying, are very supportive of the challenges that are in front of us. That they understand some of the dissent that's occurred against public libraries and um, some of the significant funding challenges that are ahead of us and how that will possibly affect services. And I I got the feeling they're standing behind us. So just acknowledge them.
Um, but it still stands that we know the term is closed, final meeting.
I feel like such a slack.
But I don't think it's a done deal, so I think it's like kind of two and a half of me and.
Save the emotional accolades for the event, it's gonna happen. But really significant things, it's a, it's a big task and it's been really great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
When we look forward to next month when you're gonna make public comment.
Out on the West Coast next month. Okay. He, let's see, um, children's report. It sounds like you've been plenty busy. I didn't want to add anything. Angie?
We are up to one thousand forty-four signups for the kids and Tina and Elks have seven hundred and thirty-seven signed up, so. Moving along.
Can you give some reference point like compared to most years?
Um, it's a little bit lower than than prepaid that way, than. A little bit higher, well, actually, no, I take that back. Compared to last year, but the kids were in school until June sixth and when I ran the numbers, we were actually about um, it was about four hundred, four hundred short. Um, when I was writing this report, we were four hundred short, we'd get report. But we also started it.
It just got left.
Yeah, and usually wait until the kids are out of school. And this year we started while kids were in school, so I think it's for a big majority of it. Um, plus, this is a new year too that um we have been putting um, a lot of the reading logs just at the self-checkouts for people to grab and go, so they're not actually stopping and signing up with us first. So I'm, as those come hopefully back.
We might see less sign-ups, but our completion percentage might be higher.
Yeah, and we'll, I mean, we'll sign them up because we gotta put them in the record, so they'll get signed up when I'm bringing back their completed forms, so. It might be a lot of people signing up and completing on the same day.
Isn't it helpful to you to have the same date, just be June first every year? At my other library, boy, that was a game changer for the staff, the stress level and like.
It's kind of what we've been moving to is just to have it. It's just a nice starting this day.
It saves your individual conversations with every single sharing about what they start, yeah. Yeah, I mean, it may change the way your sign-ups are looking, but I think overall for your staff, it might be really nice.
And please, when you walk out of the building, you won't see them, but when you do turn around and look back the doors, um, how, you know, you saw them, so just stickers um, on them, their window cling. So you can actually see out of them, so it doesn't look like you're looking at anything, but when you look into the building, you can see uh, the beautiful logo that uh, the graphics team designed and Elsa is going along, that's my idea. And every time I walk into his office, I'm like, come walk with me, I want to buy something.
Brilliant.
So then they they look fantastic. I think again, too, we did put specific dates on those uh, because they can be used and doesn't kind of move to just a Iowa City reads type.
Um, just text those internet connections.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Um, all right. Thank you, Angie. Now, collection services. Tell budget is on your mind these days.
Uh, I wanted to also just um reiterate that Melody and Alissa will be presenting at Hail, which is such a big deal.
It is a big deal.
Actually tied to our, the audiobook. Remember looking at audiobooks because we we know that this is going to impact people, and so what are ways that we can help them and what is investigating? Action on people's phone. To be able to use audiobook options better. But uh, yeah, we are gonna start phasing out our audiobook discollections. We're going to give it a good long phase out for especially for the adult collections, so about a year and a half, so that we can work with the public. Let them know, get them on Libby, get them on Hoopla. Make sure that they're comfortable. Work at the services for the blind, who saves too as well, make sure to that, so. But the YA and the children's, we're gonna go first because they're not being used. Uh, we had this year, make seven patients check out an audiobook from beyond, actually, teens don't know what CDs are.
They do know what Libby is, so, yeah.
They um, and they were teens who checked them out. There is no one, we know the demographics. Every less, so we think it's it's time to move. I'm happy to answer.
One thing I wanted to call out was the Chromebooks and Hotspots going away. Yes, obviously, everyone's disappointed by that because the intent behind that was to increase internet access to our patrons. It didn't work and that's okay. And I just want to say thank you for the explanation and I'm sorry it didn't work out.
I know, it was great. It's disheartening to like throw a whole bunch of Chromebooks back into the mix of hotspots and then you know, three months later, it seems like we don't have anymore and we tried to call everybody and we can't get hold of them.
Yeah.
One was at a pawn shop, the others are broken. It it took, it wasn't just the replacement parts, there is a staff person who has to call, everybody has to send out those bills, who has to work with the police, like it is very intensive. And it was twelve items. And if it takes up the majority of your time, we were yeah, about one point two million things go out of this building every year and those are the ones that yeah, one point two million things go out of this building every year, and those are the ones that are causing I I will say, I, we were at a meeting, a city meeting yesterday, that they were talking about the Better Together, twenty thirty campaign. Maybe that band is on there, so I really do feel that internet access is a community issue. The library offering hotspots per week is not providing internet access to somebody.
Right.
Uh, it's a bigger problem than what we provided it.
But in advocating for that access, can we, can we stay in that conversation?
Yes.
Of community solutions, because I think this really is access information.
Yeah. I agree.
I think the goal of it, when you say it didn't work, didn't work out, we did it for the goal of it.
Why, why would we try to do, why to work in that?
It's a little bit off, but are they tracking it all? But I I can think of high school students, they don't have access to internet at home, but are they? Is the city tracking it all where the?
World and Iowa City schools do have hotspots. Iowa City schools provide hotspots for students. So, so, not adults, so not, I mean, but if every family who does not have adequate internet access can get a hotspot if their kid is enrolled in either Iowa City Community Schools or the Homeschool Assistance Program partnered with Iowa City.
I think that's.
So, so as students, so children, because we, because the school district provides the device and expects them to be able to use the device, they also have a responsibility to make sure that they the device, I mean, it's not a, that's not a perfect solution, there is exactly the same problems at the Iowa City schools, they devote a ton of staff time to this.
But someone's.
But, but there is, so, so, high school students do have a way and their families therefore do, can also use that hotspot in the same way, so it's an outlier group.
Okay.
That makes, so, so, yeah, it's not school kids. I mean, there, I'm sure that there's a whole lot of other. So, but it would be working with those community partners that also work with, um, those marginal, that access. But I don't know how to say that right, but like the groups that need access to all kinds of things are also. So like that would be a stronger way to spend your time is to have that kind of advocacy advocacy group because um, I also deal with breaking Chromebooks every day of my life, and so um, there is a whole lot of time and resources devoted to it, and so at least like we can guarantee that, you know, it's not affecting children's schooling in any way, that's not.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, well, thank you, Anne, and anybody have comments about Brent's or questions about Brent's report?
I just, I mean, having feedback about that hearing loop, has anyone? Yeah, they heard anything?
Andrew got some feedback about it from a children's program, I don't remember exactly what it was, but it was positive feedback.
Excellent, I just wonder, I mean.
Yeah.
I just think that's such neat technology.
And I, I actually neglected to put this in my report, but the Optimist of Iowa City actually, um, uh, sending us about twelve hundred dollars in support of installation. They were excited to hear about it and I've been talking about the hearing loop with folks as I move, uh, around advocating for the library and people are really excited about this edition.
Excellent. Okay, did you have anything else you want to add to your report?
I know, I, um, I can, I can tell you that the numbers for the book sale landed a little over three thousand dollars. So, um, yeah, we had ninety boxes of books and moved about, um, about sixty five.
Okay. President's report, I don't really have much of a report except to say, well, I thought Robin was leaving, but she leaves, whether she leaves or not, I think that she's been a, for me, a good partner, because I we started this term together and she's been a great mentor and you all are fortunate if she is able or plans to, um, continue on, I will also, for me, the six years has been really a positive experience, I think. I especially appreciate the board right now because everybody is respectful, the conversations are respectful. They're not, um, you know, everybody reads packet and I I contacted Ellsworth after the last meeting, because I thought the last meeting was especially good, because especially you and Joseph raised um, questions, and it was such, for me, such a tremendous opportunity to learn, um, you know, Ellsworth's perspective and what the staff does, and I I thought it was a really good, uh, conversation, and I appreciate this group for the, that they're able to do that. I will, I was part of the search committee, um, as was Robin, and and I think, uh, that was it, and so were Jason and Anne, which was my opportunity to get to know them better. It it was a, it was a very interesting experience, um. I think, um, you know, I think the transition from a legacy uh, director to a new director was harder than people necessarily anticipated. Harder for the staff, harder for the new director, um, but I think overall in the last five, how long have you been here, four years? To me, compared to the first two years I was on the board, it's just been an opportunity for the board to be more, um, more involved, more engaged, and so I think it's, it's been a positive thing and I, um, I think the library is gonna survive, just fine. Yeah, we got through COVID, we did get through COVID, um, so, oh, and then the staff, I I just can't, I wouldn't have known, not being, if I'd never been on the board, I never would have really appreciated the, um, level of staff that we have, especially the leadership team, I mean, they really are amazing. I worked for like thirty years in libraries and a lot of that was as a leader. And boy, I would have been so happy to have this staff instead of some of the staff that. And I worked in a lot of libraries, public libraries, academic libraries, special libraries, and you guys, you really are tremendous. And and I've learned so much from your reports, so for me, it's been a really good six years, however, I am not crazy and I'm not good doing another six years. Be really old by then, I think Robin's younger than I am, so that's my excuse for not continuing. But anyway, I appreciate.
Turn should end before I retire, the next turn.
Um, announcements from members.
I just want to say thank you, Karen.
Oh, yeah, you're, you're welcome, it's been, um, I did not plan to be present. But, um, but it's been, it's been, it really is, I I really have no negative things to say about the experience, especially the last couple of years have been really, really good. Um, I was getting a bit of a complex because we kept losing board members, but hopefully now it's a stable group. Anyway.
And all meetings have been worth.
Committee reports is.
The Friends Foundation did get together, um, in, uh, we had, we had our meeting and we talked about our, uh, let's see. I always mix the words up, I'm just talking, strategic plan and our mission and objective, and we've got something together, I don't think we're quite ready to share because we're gonna look at it internally a little bit to make sure that we get it judged up, so to speak, but, uh,
Okay. And I think, so that takes us to the consent agenda, um. People, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda or I need discussion about amending the minutes.
I can make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
He's stuck at every book.
Get her name on paper, whatever.
Good support.
Okay, um, and then the next thing is the agenda for the July meeting. Since we went ahead and did the Nobu budget, I don't think we have any carryover things. The strategic plan review, we're done with now, right?
That will be the old plan, the plan that's.
Oh, the, the review, okay, okay. Okay, um, in that case, I think we will.
I was, I'm sorry, I forgot to mention certain reports, I just wanted to say that we had the drag story time at the pool event, and it went great. It felt finally like a children's program, just everybody was relaxed, there was no adult conflict. Um, they cordoned off an area of the lawn, um, inside the pool pumps for families and children, um. There was a police officer that was there at our request, um. I got two positive comments afterwards from people just kind of saying like it was nice to have him there, kind of in case anything happened, but just felt like a children's event, which is what it's intended to be. So, it, it, I think everybody was relieved. No, no, and there was the, the, the storage time was part of a larger part of the pool. And then there was also in that park, um, like a cookout kind of an event, like there were multiple pride things happening sort of in one little area, and I didn't see any um, compromises at all. So, I forgot, I'm sorry, I forgot to do that update, but thanks for letting me.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, now we will adjourn.